October nineteen, four weeks in order. I'd be pleased, please. I'd be pleased to be by your side.
The United States of America.
The United States of America. Foundation. Under God. It is the law. For good or for bad. Okay, the first order of business is, uh, need a motion for a public hearing for any comments on the comprehensive plan.
I'll make the motion. We open that public hearing there? Sorry, yeah.
All in favor?
Alright.
Anybody got any comments on the comprehensive plan? We'll leave that open and we'll move on. Approval of the September twenty-first regular board meeting.
Make the motion. We approve it then?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who the vouchers? Uh, vouchers. Uh, general fund one hundred and five thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. Let's see, we've got water fund forty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Sewer fund one hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred forty-six dollars seventy-seven cents. Capital fund, we've got two million eight hundred forty-seven, forty-one thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. I make a motion that we pay those bills.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project. Basically, that's done except for the long-term bonding on the sewer portion of it. And that's scheduled to be done November third. So all I have on that.
That's it?
Yep. Phase two wastewater treatment upgrades.
So, a lot of progress there. The Dakota building got set early in the month. They've now installed that roof on that building. They've ordered, and that Dakota building is, um, there's a lot of electrical controls in there. They, uh, they've ordered the siding and light fixture that was damaged during transit. Clearing contact tank roof was completed today. They have a little bit of work on the, um, on the gates left to go in there, but that's basically done. Sledge was removed from Lagoon One, and they've begun the bottom prep and final cleanup of that, uh, of that lagoon. And you have a payout there, Joe. You want to do that now or later?
These are in the capital, but I think we should have a motion to approve the payouts. Ones, this is on the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, need, I would say, a motion for North Country Contractors at the amount of seven hundred ninety thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Go ahead and pay that.
I'll make that motion.
You'll second? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we got one with, uh, American Process Group. And this also, I believe, Matt can tell me if I'm wrong, there's going to be, it ends up being additional sludge quantities, and that's in this payout.
So we, we can, or you can approve the payout contingent on a change order that we have back now. We're trying to finalize the quantities. Uh, we just need to review all of it.
It's going to be about another forty-five hundred dry tons, is that right?
Yeah, and in that payout, they have the full forty-five hundred dry tons, and that's what the number will, will be. It'll be right around that. This payout only includes sixty percent of that because it was through the end of the month.
So we need a motion contingent on the, the change order for one million four hundred fourteen thousand twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else on wastewater?
Nope. The groundwater well development projects, uh, Matrik has been out there for a little over a month now. They have most of the water main installed. Uh, they've been working on, there's a, they found one great big rock out there that they've been hammering on for a few days. And, um, they are working on that, and that will finish, that'll complete the water line. Uh, but they have jumped over that rock and completed the connections to the wells. And they're, uh, some of their guys are working in the back doing the air release faults on the way out there. Almost all of the main line is in, and they're going back to do the, uh, air release faults and, and, uh, make the final connections. The attrition is supposed to start the end of this month and beginning of next month.
Is he moving his trailer around?
Has he?
Is that all you have on?
That is all I had, yeah.
Okay, we also have a, a payout for the groundwater, and that's, uh, from Manfred Construction at the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Need a motion to approve that.
I'll make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who is my first and second?
It was first, I'll second. Ty goes for runner.
Okay, LED conversion program, street lighting. We're still plugging along on that. I got an email. They're supposed to be back in town, uh, KLM next week, finish up a few of the punch list items. We're also discussing, uh, maintenance contracts. And I know Paul and myself, we're scheduled for a meeting with the LED people to go over the maintenance contracts. And that's about where it is at the moment. Comprehensive plan, we'll leave that open. Dog control. We talked a little bit last meeting. Whether we wanted to make all dogs in the village on a leash or leave them lull away at the road. I don't know if anybody got a chance to look that up. That was only because the dog control officer, the second day of school, got a phone call. Somebody was at a corner where a bus picked up children, and they had a dog and wasn't allowed to leave. Dog really, that wasn't bothering anybody, though. But myself, as I drive through the village, I see a lot of people out walking their dogs, and just about everyone's on a leash, so.
There's your two that don't.
I don't. In, in section seventy-seven dash four prohibited acts, the very first one is run at large, so you're supposed to have your dog under control.
Right.
It's up to the board, though. I don't really think they need to make any changes to that law. Whatever the board would like to do. If you wanted to, that could change. I talked with Joe Russell a month or so ago on this. Just got to find it. Under G, it says all dogs when in public parks should be on a leash, no more than six feet long, and then it goes on. The only thing you'd have to change is on that G, you just have to take out park. We just leave it in park. And then all dogs would have to be on leashes. That one incident, I don't know. I don't really think we need to change it. It's a few things.
Well, how much would that at large, how much would that at large hold up in a court case? You know what I mean, or?
Well, these were originally written up by our attorneys, so.
Just to me, that's kind of saying the same thing. You know what I mean?
And that's, you know, let's see what it says. That's the copy of the whole law on dog control. Got everything. I guess the agreement maybe has, everything has it on a lease, and that's why he's, he's also a dog control officer.
What does he have to say about it, Joe? What does the dog control officer have to say about it? Anything?
Well, because he got that complaint, he thinks probably it ought to be. To my knowledge, that's the only complaint he's had. He's got, it was his second day of school. Or I can talk to him and let him know if he gets any more complaints, then we can bring it back up if he wants to do that.
No, like I said, saying, saying that they can't hunt at large, to me says they almost have to be under control somehow, whether it's by leash or whatever. How would that stand up is what I'm saying, if we had a case.
But they were going, also, I'm thinking that, say, your dog bit me, I'm thinking it'd be between me and you.
That's what I'm getting at. I was a partner. This is a village, you know, responsible and not?
No, it shouldn't be.
We can always be held, we can always be dragged in, but.
Yeah.
They'll go for us because we have deeper pockets insurance-wise. So it's not, I don't think it's going to matter how you write it up. How the attorney is going to work around wordage. If it gets to our level. There's also some people out there that deal with dog bites on their own. I had a dog bit in the face. We didn't do anything. That was thirty years ago.
If you want to see a September report, there it is. But basically, it's barking dogs, uh, running, uh, unlicensed. Rabby shots, but he's, he's done his checks on the, on the dogs that have been unlicensed. And anyway, checks entered, he's found that besides unlicensed, they didn't have the rabby shots up to date. And that's like, there was nothing here as far as dogs biting or bothering people at all.
Another thing I can think of that you could build into that law, put some teeth into it, no pun intended, or intended, is if a dog bites somebody, be an automatic fine. It's kind of like, it's kind of like if you catch the dog addicted to the pound, you get it back.
He already does that now. I mean, he, he writes tickets and things.
When they bite?
I mean, I'm not saying when they bite, but I mean, he has the authority to write a ticket to you, and you have to go before the judge. They're out, the dog control officer already has that authority.
I'm thinking just for clarity, you could, you could stipulate a fine. My feeling is if somebody's dog bites somebody, there should be some minor repercussion at metal.
That's why I wish Randy was here tonight.
Just a thought.
Randy, Randy would know the answer to that one.
Why don't you discuss it with Randy?
We can bring it back up next month.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Craft motorized vehicle, the local law. Anybody got any comments on that? Pretty straightforward. I think we should go ahead and schedule a public hearing on it.
Make the motion. We schedule a public hearing for November fifteenth at four o'clock.
I'll second. What was that date, the monthly bid date?
November fifteenth. That's on the rails to trails, correct?
I knew I shouldn't touch that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Sixteen.
What's the, I have a red date.
We got a, like, you can.
November sixteen.
Sixteen. Two weeks from Friday, you have an exit.
Just some time to put on, get a little more. Do we have a second on that, did we?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know, it can cause anything. You want to talk on the other one, Tom, or?
Uh, I mean, it's just my opinion. I wish to go with the draft, same with water, myself, and just change the wording to the village of Albon. But that's about as simple as you get. There's a minor fine of twenty-five dollars, I think. Worded in there somewhere. But that's my opinion. I mean, I don't know if the wording of garage sale, yard sale should all be in one, but in the definitions, it actually describes a garage sale, or a yard sale, or a flea market, or anything like that. The, uh, the one in question that has your stuff out, isn't that in the right of way where it's out?
The right of way between, would be between the sidewalk and the road.
And I think, and I think that that stuff is between the sidewalk and the road, if I'm right, you go and buy it.
Yeah, it's cleaned up somewhat, though.
Yeah.
And that spells that out, right?
Yes, it does, probably, but it isn't. That's my only opinion on that, that we should have the attorney or whatever write up the law. That'll require a public hearing also, I believe. Yes, it would. We'll do that one someday.
I almost think though, where it says chapter one fifty-eight garage sales, I'd, I'd make that garage and, and yard sales.
Now, if you look in the definition, for some reason I can't find this.
They're not going separate, so it probably doesn't have to be.
If you look in the definitions on the garage sale, it says includes all sales offered to the public conducted from or non-residential premises in any residential zone for the purpose of disposing personal property, including but not limited to sales entitled garage, lawn, tag, yard, barn, attic, porch, room, backyard patio, or flea market. So it kind of takes in everything. And that has a definition of personal property also, so.
At this time of year, I don't think we're going to see a lot of garage sales.
No, we're not. But we probably will.
So I guess my question is, should we, the consensus of the board will send this on to the termies and have it rewritten to?
It actually allows two garage sales a year. The only other thing, I was in one of those other ones, where that the village board could waive, you know, another one if they wanted, or whatever. But I don't know if they want to do that or not.
I mean, the whole reason behind this is just people that basically have chunks inside the road here around, just eliminate that.
Now, there's another.
Not really anything against anybody having a garage sale.
There's one other issue that I see coming to play, and that creates, uh, traffic safety a lot of times. Yeah, I think, I think, as I think about it, probably two is fine, because it does state in there that, you know, you can have a, one with your neighbor too, so you actually look at out, hope if you want to do this one.
A lot of people do that, but like family garage sales became a thing. Well, everybody's agreeable to this one. We'll just get it refined and then bring it back.
Agreed.
And once we got it refined, we're about to start the public hearing and stuff. New business, craft surcharges. August twenty-two for the sewer, that was zero. September twenty-two for water, that was zero. You don't have to do anything there. General fund budget amendments. I guess we need a motion to make those amendments.
I will make a, do you want them separate or all together, or?
It's all general funds, I think they're together.
It's all general.
I'll make a motion that we approve those budget amendments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need to approve LaVille Housing Authority standing a sweeping contract. We need to sign the contract with them. I'll make a motion. Do you have a copy on that? authorize you to sign the contract, ma'am? Yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will stay for this one because I'm on the board.
What do I?
Is that something that, uh, it's too late for this issue because October, is that something that we should have people bid on versus us doing that or not? I guess that's a question for Paul. Is Paul here?
If anybody was going to bid that, I would think it should be the Elzing Authority.
Well, what I'm saying, yeah, and I agree with that, Joe. What I just, what I'm saying is, is that something where, as a municipality, we should be looking to get away from that? Well, I know we're not doing this school anymore.
But the thing is, we're part of the Elzing Authority.
And I know that, but I'm just thinking from a cost standpoint, would it be cheaper for us to, to have that part privatized? I don't know. Just, just something to think about for, because in the tough winter, we're stressed.
Um, got any comments on that? You want to, anything you want to say on that, Paul?
Um, I think what we receive kind of equals out the amount of time that we spend over there.
And even, and even in the worst of times, it doesn't create an issue and a backlog for removing stuff off?
Not really.
Okay.
No. If it becomes an issue, then I'll let you know.
All in favor on that one?
Aye.
Fire contracts. Got a couple things happening here. I think everybody knows what's been going on Copenhagen way. So basically, come October twenty-second at midnight, Town of Pickney and the second half of the Town of Harrisburg no longer going to have fire protection. So they come to the LaVille Fire Department in the village, and they want, uh, fire protection. So basically, what, talking with Joe, what we've done for this year to get through to the end of December thirty-first, we come up with a memorandum of understanding between each, between LaVille Fire Department and Town of Pickney, and between LaVille Failure Department and Town of Harrisburg, which we think's, uh, a fair memorandum of understanding for all parties involved. And basically, the fire department will be signing it, the towns will be signing it, and the village will be signing it. And so on the two memorandings of understanding for Harrisburg and Pickney, I need authorization from the Board of Fire to sign the memorandum of understanding between both. And it should be for Harrisburg and the Town of Pickney. And the memorandum runs from October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two at midnight through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two at eleven fifty-nine P.M. And that will get them fire protection for the rest of this year. All in favor on that one?
Got a second.
I'll second. Anybody opposed? Okay, that brings us down to the fire contracts. Basically, Harrisburg has already notified the fire department and the villages that they want them to take over the portion that Copenhagen was doing. So we have a full contract to them. Uh, we have not heard back for sure, or have, from Pickney yet. We ask Pickney to give us a answer by the end of this month. For, Pickney's also talking with, I mean, with Rodman, I believe, right? Which is closer, which would be better for Pickney, but, uh.
But if it runs up to twenty-second, they want us, what are we going to do?
No, we're, we're taking it for the rest of this year.
That's a memorandum, Paul.
That's already set. It's for, it's for, it's next year's contract. I told them they have a little bigger room to wait until they get their pricing from.
Yes, thank you.
And while we're discussing contracts, LaVille's, Town of LaVille, if you were to look at the original fire contract, talks about the agreement. And then as you go down through, it talks about the town board of the town. And then, uh, so basically, they were just, Town of LaVille was wondering if we could take out, when we redo their contract, where it says like town board of the town, if we can just add town in there instead. As it goes through the contract, which it does make more sense because it makes it line up with the very first paragraph on page one. So I don't see a problem with, with making those changes. It's pretty simple. Everything else in the contract stays the same. It's just, it's still the same town board of the town. It's just going to say town. So nobody has any problem with that, that are okay with signing the fire contract. Do you need a motion to?
I'll make the motion. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Interominable agreement with Rick Collins. You see a copy of that? Did we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
No, I have a guide before I come out. All the board members have. So if everybody's okay with that, I just need a motion to go ahead and sign that agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to Housing Authority. There's a vacancy on the Housing Authority right now that runs through, yeah, resignation. And that person's term was up March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. I'd like a motion to appoint Kristen Fortlip to the LaVille Housing Authority through three thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. And then I've already talked with her, and then I told her come March, we would reappoint her. And then we'd get the terms back where they're filed, and in the right sequence. So I just need a motion to be able to appoint Kristen. She works up here at Community UVA in Collison. I'll make the motion to appoint Kristen Nuttrop to the LaVille Housing Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence. Rick Collins' October newsletter. Questions on that? If he's here, he can elaborate if need be.
How did the video presentation go?
Good. We got Joe's intro to that, to the video there done, and actually with Bob Mullins too, at the same time when they were here. But they were here, that we did, uh, we got most all the videos done, uh, throughout the region that we wanted. There's a few left that I'm actually going around picking up for them. Um, we have a few more intros left, but they said that the video will probably be put together and ready here sometime this winter, so. I don't know more ones. They got everything they have, so they can start working.
And we had the Town of Pickney fire coverage contract. That was just a letter, uh, Joe. Questions on that? Double Play is hosting their annual Thanksgiving turkey trot from Thursday, November twenty-fourth. Nobody had a problem with that, I believe. They do it every year. Because we need a motion to, to give Eric a call. Don't make a move. Because we need a motion to, let me give Eric a call, and I'll let him move forward. If anybody's got questions on it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll double check with Randy, because make sure he knows what's going on. He's never had a problem with it in the past, so.
I'll second.
Do I need to abstain from that? I'm on the board, but I don't think it matters. I'm not part of this, so.
You can abstain if you want. That's fine. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. I think we need to move back. Comprehensive. Anybody got any questions on that, Joe, or anything? Picky, can we just adopt this with a motion, or do we have to do an actual resolution?
Um, I think it's a resolution, but.
That's what I was saying, man. But we can still go ahead and adopt it, and I can just do a resolution, right?
Yeah. We have to take a roll call, vote on a resolution. Which is no big deal. I'll make the motion that we.
Well, we gotta close public hearing first.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And then we'd need a motion to, then we'd need a motion to adopt, if we can find a new plan.
I'll turn around and make the motion to adopt it.
All in favor? If we can, if we can get that resolution drawn up and signed. I was thinking of that later this afternoon. Village attorney, he's out here. I don't have anything different. What treasure do you have there?
Um, just that village taxpayers have until October thirty-first to pay their village taxes before they go to the county, and water billing goes out November first.
Chief of police not here. Superintendent.
Fall cleanup has started. We've got the leaf back out. We're gonna try to get as much as we can. Just a reminder to residents that if you put leaves out, please don't put the brush with the leaves. Put them in two separate piles, and don't put it in the road. Will come through on your front yard and will grab that. Sewer plant's always open to bring your brush down there or take your leaves down.
Paul, just a question as a resident here. We had a last windstorm, a decent-sized limb, not huge, but a decent size. Too big for the normal brush ones. Just get that maybe cut up a little bit, and you could take it down just in small chunks, or what's the best way to handle something like that?
Is it out by the road?
No, because it's kinda too big for, I mean, it's a ten-foot limb, but it's.
I'd open to a five-foot lemon.
That's right, yeah.
And you'll take it.
Yeah, I figured as much. Just run that.
Just don't do it Monday, because Berets will be here to pave Jackson Street.
Oh, that was part two of my question. I kinda like the milling, though. It slows people off.
We thought it was gonna be this week, but oh well. Weather.
The weather pushes them back, which pushes us back.
Weather has not been good to us.
Uh, that's it?
The new signs are installed, one by Walmart that says, Welcome to Laugle. You saw the signs last month here. We got them up today. So there's one at Walmart and one by the hybrid on the club. I guess, they look, they look really nice, and I guess in the future we'll look into getting possibly two more.
Yeah. We don't have anything on twenty-sixth.
We don't have anything on twenty-sixth, so. But that'll be next year.
Plus, we're hoping next spring, possibly, to do some landscaping around the bases of the, kind of spruce them up a little more, and it's late this year. Did you have, you had something on the playground too, didn't you?
That was gonna get. Oh, yes. So the playground that was donated to us by Geimel, it will be here in the second or third week of November. So we obviously won't put that up this year. We'll wait until the spring. Talking with Lee Henkelman, possibly we'll get some help from the soldiers. So it should be handy. That would be it, unless you've got more.
No. Capital Future Planet. Personnel. I'd like a short executive session to discuss personnel. Does anybody else have anything?
I may have. I would like to request a personnel report here for an issue with the target. Separate than what? Separate than what you're gonna talk about. Finance.
Uh, thanks to Charlie, we've got, got up to July for the audits. I should be in tomorrow to do August and September as far as the audits goes, and I've gotta sign vouchers for the ones that I missed for the second half of the day today. Other than that?
Ladies and fires department.
Um, I attended a meeting last month. I don't know that I have anything to report. It was a pretty simplistic meeting. This month they're gonna be early because Halloween, and they wanted to thank the board for the money applied towards the security system. And I'll yield the floor to Joe if he's got anything to say.
I'm all set. You all set, y'all?
All good.
Police department.
Already, until either one of them, we're at two months after, so the reports are in your package.
Any board, zone board? Nothing to report in the meeting at the end of this month? May I speak for board?
No, thanks.
Town, that meeting tomorrow.
Gonna be a long one, do I think?
County.
Uh, nothing of interest to report.
Recreation.
Uh, Danielle informed us that we have sent out the bill for summer recreation for the county's portion. Um, other than that, I think we're pretty well all set.
We haven't received it yet.
Can I ask a question on the route? What is the process that we want to do in reviewing that for next year? Have we determined anything yet, Mayor, and how we wanna handle that?
Actually, last week I talked to Bob Mullen, and I told him that right after the first year, we should set up a committee and figure out what we were gonna do, because I'm telling you right now, say things were just to stay the same. I know costs are gonna jump close to four thousand dollars, because minimum wage goes up a dollar December thirty-first. So you figure all the employees that we had this year will get a dollar raise automatically. So that's an authenticity reason. The rec program by close to four thousand dollars right there.
I'm absolutely in favor of keeping that program going. There may be a few things that need to be tweaked in it, and listening to some residents, but all in all, I think it's a very good program.
I think it's come to the point where once we get the committee together, that we may have to charge a nominal fee in the future.
I'd be happy to be about that committee, so inclined.
Anything on Ray Call, what we've already talked about?
We had to hurt their person maybe in about a year or so.
Yes. And our next one will probably be related to the visual radar signs. I'm trying to get the company to do a presentation on that. I'll just mention too, the dinner, the talk of questioning on dinners this Thursday, plus tomorrow night, and their backstreet. Very mentioned about the video and the new member that's part of the IMA, letting Town of Program into being a member of Ray Guy. And I'll just mention that the Economic Visioning Summit, the results we got back from the surveys that were done for that, and from the results we had at that session. We do have a small group now, kinda put together. That's Megan Krikowski from Los County Planning, who's offered to sit on that, as well as Adam Fuller from Fuller Insurance, and Jason Webb from Craig Systems, the three of them, and said they wanted to take a look at the threats and opportunities and that type of thing that were addressed at that summit. So we'll be starting meeting on that, so. That's what I got.
Oh, we, Tom? Paul? I have a question. Do you have anything over their office equipment that was excess that we were selling, particularly like filing cabinets?
Yes.
You do?
They, we already sold them.
Oh, they were? All of them?
Yes. They were put on the passable option.
We got desks. I've been looking for desks. We've got some there. Looking for a couple of filing cabinets. I need some usage for a couple. So we're gonna be putting some desk up for sale every quick.
Those are my project, uh, same site for Louis County. I don't, they're still on there, but.
That's right, there was.
Because of Clunfield School, had a pile of them.
Oh, really?
Eighty K options.
Yeah, eighty K options.
Over.
Nick said it's over, though.
Oh, is it over?
Somebody wanna contact Matt Connor?
That's not why. Any other public comment? I guess we need a motion to go into that section.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?